...embryance, we're focusing on how to handle grief in different ways. It's gonna be, it's gonna be really good this year. I'm super excited.
I just want to say, have an extra thank you for, for the city of Port Angeles and our council, and for our first responders, for police, fire, and paramedics. I really appreciate everything that you do. And without you guys, I don't think our overdose rate would have fallen a little bit as it has. But it still takes a whole community to, you know, to help our people. And yeah, that's all. I just really appreciate it. And thank you, guys.
I have participated the last few years, and it is a lot of fun. So I would encourage all of you to come out. And it's really powerful to see the tower lit up. I only saw it by photo last time, but I will try to stay awake long enough to see it, see it this year. But I want to thank you again for all the work that you do in our community. And we look forward to coming out and supporting you and encourage everyone to, to join down at City Pier on the 31st. So thank you very much. All right. Next, I would like to invite Police Chief Brian Smith up. And I'm gonna let him do the other, oh, and our deputy chief. And I'm gonna let him do the rest of the introductions. Yes. And the reluctant recipient. Yes. I'm gonna turn it over to Chief for a few minutes, and then I'll say a few words to him.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor. And so, this is a little bittersweet, because I already miss Eric, because he's... What's that? Yeah, I'm about to introduce Eric to you. A lot of people in the room know him, but you don't know maybe everything about Eric. So Eric grew up in Port Angeles. He's been with the Port Angeles Police Department seventeen years. Salt Lake City PD before that. And I don't know if he's the longest-serving detective, but he's one of the longest-service people in our detective division. School Resource Officer, working detective, Detective Corporal. In modern times, while he was doing this work, he earned a master's degree in psychology, which of course, you know, meant we were probably gonna lose him. But, you know, Eric's team members, who are standing in the back of the room, work some of the most difficult, challenging, hard, sort of stay-with-you, you know, forever kind of cases. So I kind of understand when we lose people, because it's tough work, and, you know, you can't do it forever. But tonight, Deputy Chief Vade is gonna read an award, and it's kind of reflective of the quality of work of, you know, Sergeant Corey Malone and her team, and Eric, and the kind of work that they do. So Eric's soon to retire from law enforcement. He's still technically working for us. But he's continuing his public service in mental health, which, you know, all, makes all of us very proud. And like, the, the well-educated, articulate, really smart person that Eric is, and this dry sense of humor, like, you know, you talk about dry, like a desert. You know, that's like, no, no, we're talking like the planet Mars, dry. You know, that's Eric's sense of humor, but, but I miss it. And, you know, I enjoy talking to him and being, you know, being with him. And I'm not the only coworker that, you know, has a strong sort of attachment to you and, you know, wishes you were still here. So that's kind of lead up to the award that Chief Vade is gonna talk about.
I will trade you. And I will summarize the award, since the citation is lengthy. So many of our awards that we give out are for an event that happens quickly and briefly and dramatically. And however, the distinguished service medal that the chief is about to present, Eric, is for a long-term action that is above and beyond the call of duty. And in this instance, there was a terrible crime committed in 1988. And it was investigated as well as it could be at that time. And there were things that needed to be done in order to solve the crime, but the technology just didn't exist in 1988. And the case went cold. And in 2001 and 2012, other investigators picked it up and took another crack at it and tried to solve the crime. But the technology just still wasn't there. And finally, almost four decades later, the technology existed, but all that meant was that there was a whole lot of hard work that could now be done. And so Eric picked that up, and he did all of that hard work. And it, and he had to be dogged and methodical and actually do the work that DNA allowed him to finally do after all that time. And he solved that very old crime. And he answered a lot of questions that, for so many years, had been unanswered. And we're proud of Eric for all the work that he did and how he stuck to it. Thank you, Eric, and Godspeed on your new adventure.
My, I don't have anything particularly heartfelt. I think the other stuff covered it. But I think, for me, having been around the city, so at least one of my kids went to school with one of Eric's kids. So I've seen him in street clothes all the time. And he's been a detective the whole time I've been on council. And a couple of years ago, at Law Enforcement Memorial Day, he was standing around with other officers in his uniform. And I was like, and I haven't met you before. He was like, well, I'm Eric. Yeah, okay. Well, you're in your uniform, and he had his cover on, and I hadn't seen him that way before. So it just made me laugh that he's been doing a great job as a detective for so long that I hadn't seen him in his, in his blue uniform. So. And we have something else here, but I'm gonna turn the mic over to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. So last thing is, just to thank you to Eric's family for sharing him with us for so long. Because we, you know, we all have families ourselves, but we understand the wear and tear and the time spent away. So thanks for letting us have him for seventeen years.
A thank you for your service and your continued service in a very relevant field that we just talked about. All right. Before we move on to public comment, thank you all for coming. And it's no offense, we will not be offended if you leave. You don't need, you don't need tones to run off. Thank you for coming. All right. We, I am going to rearrange the agenda slightly. Latricia is able to join us this evening, but had a recent emergency that means that she is not going to be able to stay for the whole meeting. And so because I think it's really important to have all council input on the appointment process, I'm going to move that up. We will still do public comment first, in case anyone is here to comment on that item. But we'll do public comment and then go to the application review process. And also, I'm going to rearrange also Item G1, because it is a budget amendment requires a supermajority. And I think it is best to have all of us here for that. So we will go ahead with the public comment. I don't have my, is there a sign-up sheet? And so if you are joining us virtually and wish to make a public comment, now is the time to raise your hand. If you're in the webex, it's star three.
And Mayor, while the clerk is retrieving the signing list, did you want to discuss late items, if there were any?
Yes, I should, actually. Thank you. Are there any late items from staff?
There are none.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any late items from council? All right. No late items. Thank you for that reminder. All right. We have two folks signed up. And we will, and then there's opportunity for others, too. So we'll start with John Hamilton. If you are here and wish to speak, first public comment period is on items on tonight's agenda. And then if you're in council chambers, you'll have three minutes. The lights keep track for you. And if you can just state your name and whether or not you're resident, if I, I don't currently have any hands online, but if I get any, we'll go to them after we do in-person. So, John, go ahead.
John Hamilton, Port Angeles resident. Good morning, Mayor Dexter, council members and staff. To speak on Items G1 and G2, the Second Amendment to the 2025 Budget and the Utility Base Rate Ordinance Update. On the budget amendment, I have experience and trust as a treasurer for different organizations. And I understand that budget changes are not just bookkeeping. They're decisions about priorities, trade-offs, and values. This amendment increases total revenues and expenditures citywide by about $1.66 million. The largest changes are in our utility and capital projects funds. For example, the electric utility grows by roughly $1.2 million. The electric capital improvement fund increases by about $900,000. The water capital improvement fund rises by about quarter of a million, and the transportation capital fund by about $1.60 million. These are significant mid-year investments in core infrastructure. What's important to me is not just that the changes are balanced and revenue net is expenditures, but that they're clearly explained to the public. Residents should be able to see where the extra funding is coming from, why it's being spent now rather than saved, and how it connects directly to the Strategic Plan and Capital Facilities Plan. The amendment notes that it generally aligns with the strategic plan, but details are important in increasing transparency and trust. What revenues and expenditures had been approved at previous meetings and how that was specifically incorporated into the amendment is also important to point out. On the utility base rate ordinance, the amendment clarifies that every property within city limits with a residential or commercial electric meter, water meter, sewer connection will pay the base rate in each available utility for the medic one utility, even if the service isn't actively used. I appreciate how this clarifies the ordinance. It also makes fiscal sense for maintaining infrastructure. But it's essential we consider the impact on low-income households, seniors, and owners of long vacant properties. Clear communication outreach about what assistance programs are available will be key to fairness for those members of our community that we are more impacted than others. Both these items reflect the importance of balancing fiscal responsibility with equity and transparency. Making sure we maintain and invest in our infrastructure without losing sight of the people these decisions affect. I appreciate every little work you guys do to help our city, and I appreciate you allowing me this time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'm Steve Drake. Go ahead.
My name is Steve Drake, a city resident, former city employee for forty years. There's some of you in here that realize that. I just came to comment on, I got a utility bill here last month. Or I believe it was last month, but I just noticed that there was a charge on there for water meters, utility base rate. The water meter that's sitting on a blank piece of property that's not being used, and we're getting charged for it. I think it's absolutely ridiculous. I appreciate that the city can put all this infrastructure in, inside the city and have the meters available. But when you put a meter in a resident, you charge for it, charge appropriately. But if a person is not using that water, you don't need to charge for it and get a bunch of extra money on your income just because the meter is sitting there. I understand that if they use it, if they use it or abuse it, charge them accordingly. You'll have a heck of a big fine or something if somebody abuses that privilege of having that meter in there. But you're charging it already to have it installed. You don't need to keep charging it monthly just to sit there and, and not being used. I, you know, I read meters for years, and I understand that, that if there's consumption, you charge for it. If that needs to be done, up the base price or whatever you have to do to maybe make up that income. But just because you're already charging for that meter, I'm repeating myself here, you're already charging to install that meter. You don't need to keep putting a monthly charge out there for it not being used. I think that's something that the council should take off that ordinance as far as the part that I see that's on the, on the bill. So that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I remember doing your retirement proclamation. So thank you for your service to the city.
Yeah. Like you said, I walked enough reading meters that I know what's going on. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see two.
Hi, John Rolston, City Port Angeles resident. I want to second everything that Steve Drake just said. He's probably read more meters in Port Angeles than anybody will in their lifetime by a long shot. And I suspect soon that you're gonna have some new customers that are gonna want to reiterate their opposition. So I'm clearly in opposition to this proposal. Second item is budget items. I love it when you have budget items, because that really leaves the whole page open. So one thing, it's a project that's gonna come on, is your proposed sewer from about Seventeenth Street to Seventh on A. Sewer project sounds great. Takes care of some of the CSO stuff. What puzzles me is the 20 ADA ramps. Now, maybe the 20 ADA ramps is part of a gimmick so that you can qualify for some grant monies. There are absolutely sidewalks between Eighth and Seventeenth on either the, this is on A Street, on the east side or the west side of A. Zero, nada, none. There's one half-block of sidewalk from Eighth to the Seven-Eight Alley going north on A Street. You guys are stewards of money and time that people together for these projects. ADA ramps aren't needed there. If you're gonna put them in anywhere, they need to go in on C as in Charlie Street. Second one, you've never heard me talk about traffic circles. Let's think about the three traffic circles that are in Squim. Let's think about the three traffic circles that are in Port Townsend. A lot of traffic is intersecting where those circles are. Where the city is proposing to put some traffic circles, there's absolutely no way near the type of traffic that you would see. Traffic circles are, or thinking also about the traffic circle at the far end at Canal Bridge, a lot of intersecting traffic. Where the city is proposing to put in some traffic circles, four-way stop signs will do. A lot less expensive, less time-consuming in planning and gobbling up hours. I think it's a waste of time and money for these traffic circle projects. I'll be talking about some other projects in the next segment, as my time is running short. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, Stephen Pelayo. I don't live in the city limits, but I do own a couple homes and businesses within the city limits here. This week's agenda has the monthly building permit data. You know, I've asked multiple times that I'd appreciate if there was some discussion, some analysis that takes place on this monthly building permit data. I feel like we treat it like it's an afterthought, an appendix item. It's obviously very important. Some of the highlights that I noticed from this, ADUs, year-to-date, you know, as a reminder, last year, we had twenty-five of those permitted. Year-to-date, we have seven. And I guess we have another four ADU dwelling units pending. Bottom line, it looks like despite incentives, ADUs are probably gonna be down about 50% year-on-year this year. We have seen some positive data points in the duplex side, but single-family home permits are at about nine year-to-date, you know, with about six pending in the dwelling unit lines. You know, we used to do thirty to forty homes a year. Last year, in 2024, single-family homes went down to twelve, and this year, probably fifteen, maybe twenty, if we're lucky. Finally, count all the multifamily dwelling units. Last year, we had forty. This year, year-to-date, zero, and we have zero pending. Again, another line item that we're trying to incentivize, but failing. Overall, total housing dwellings were ninety-five last year. We're at twenty year-to-date with eighteen pending. Again, looking like we're gonna be down about 50% or so. This really speaks to much larger issues. Why are investors uninterested or unwilling to invest in Port Angeles? We offer incentives, but we don't get much follow-through. We really need a much more vibrant economy to attract investors. And then we have to follow through. We have to make it easier to invest here. This building permit data is also in stark contrast to what we're seeing in our proposals for our comprehensive plan and our housing action plan that strangely assumes we're gonna see an accelerating population growth over the next twenty years. In fact, we're gonna go faster than the rest of the county when we know Squim and Carl's gonna be putting in the equivalent of twenty years of housing that took PA twenty years to do. They're doing it in like five years or so. So again, I worry about our ability to forecast, our ability to execute. It, it should scare you. It certainly scares me. In recent weeks, we've seen delays with Amazon. It looks like the vacant Rite Aid parking lots becoming more blighted with RVs in it. And most importantly, we've seen a lot of news out of OMC. It looks like their business model is sustainably unprofitable. This is likely gonna push them more and more towards choosing a critical access hospital, which I'm told would result in two-hundred to three-hundred job losses. These are the headwinds that we are facing. And if I can say it loud, again, 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 I believe, you know, Port Angeles needs to understand we're in a state of emergency here. I beg all of you to do the analysis, compare our performance to similar towns, hold ourselves accountable, and really ask ourselves if we want to underperform the next ten years like we have the last ten years. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. Anyone else in council chambers? Okay. We'll go online to Susie Blake. We'll make sure we can hear you. And I need to get my timer ready for you. Oh, there we go. All right. Susie, it looks like you're unmuted. So let's see if we can hear you, and then you can go ahead and get started.
Hello.
Hello. We can hear you. So go ahead. I'll start your timer.
Susie Blake, Port Angeles resident. I come from a long line of addicts, and they run throughout my family addictions of all sorts. And I have some thoughts, but out of respect for all the people who've put a lot of work into ending the struggles here in our community, and ultimately out of respect for the lives lost, and for all those who were damaged by overdose, that they've survived, but their bodies and minds are severely damaged by it. I'm gonna keep my thoughts on that to myself. I do want to comment on the list of candidates for the appointment. We have four races for the election, and only two of them are contested at this point. And then we have an appointment, and suddenly we have seven new candidates. And I just want to say, where were you when it was time to file for candidacy for the election? It makes one wonder. It'll be interesting to watch. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. All right, anyone else before we move on? Okay, we do have second public comment period at the end. If you think of something you'd like to say, Suzie is still unmuted. Okay, that, let me get back to my agenda. Okay, so we are going to move up item I, one, the city council application review process, and I'm going to go to Calvin to kick that up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You'll find this information starting on page I, one of your packet. On June third, twenty twenty-five, council member Meyer announced they were resigning their council position effective June thirtieth. Following council direction given at your July first meeting, the city began advertising the vacancy. The Port Angeles City Council is required to fill vacant seats on the city council within ninety days. The council therefore has until September twenty-eighth of this year to fill vacant position seven. Port Angeles City Council Rules of Procedure Section Fifteen stipulates that a vacancy must be published twice in the city's official newspaper. Staff announced the vacancy on the city's website on July second and advertised the vacancy notice in the Peninsula Daily News on July eleventh, July nineteenth, July twenty-fifth, and July thirtieth. The notice included instructions on how to apply, and the eligibility requirements were also listed in the application. A total of nine applications were submitted. Tonight's recommendation is to, one, council utilize a process such as ranked choice voting to identify three candidates to be interviewed and direct staff to invite those three finalists to an interview at the September second, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. And two, council confirm or edit the proposed candidate questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a document, which I'm going to share. Oops, hold on. I've shared on WebEx before. I don't know what it's going to pick. Hold on. Okay, just a second. There we go. There we go. Okay, and I know that it's not ideal, but. So I went back and listened to what we did last time, and I think it worked quite well. So we're going to try it again this time. I'm just going to go around and ask you to give your top three, and I'm going to put an X in those spots, and we'll see if there are any clear, any folks who clearly have a majority vote, and then we will probably have some ties and we'll deal with that. In the next round, I have the option for three rounds. Hoping that we, I'm hoping we don't need it, but we'll see. So I'm going to start with, I'm just going to go in order, but I'll go last as I usually do. Deputy Mayor Carr.
Okay. Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
I think traditionally in ranked choice voting, we rank our choices in order, one, two, and three, so we're not doing that. I'm just giving you my top three as they stand.
Correct, in no, yes, and.
In no particular order.
Correct, and what I'm, so I got more information and a good, like, solid lesson and tool for true ranked choice voting, which while we'll only have three people, I think we'll use after the interviews. And we may need to whittle this down some where we may get into ranking a little bit. So it is a modified ranked choice voting process at this time. You are correct.
Okay, just clarifying. My, my top three, again, in no particular order, are John Hamilton, Kristy Holley, and Laurel Kreip.
All right, and council member Miller.
In no particular order, mine three are Jonathan Arakawa, Danny Stager, and Noah Brady.
Lindsay.
So it's great that we have a lot of fantastic applicants to fill one seat. And as much as we'd love to figure out another way to not have everyone but one out, that is the process we're going through. So eight people will not be selected, and this is not personal in any way to folks. So like, I appreciate everyone applying. I think a lot of interest in surveying city councils is really key. I appreciate the comment about run for election as the standard way of getting on city council. All the three positions will be contested on the general election ballot. And, you know, what we're doing now is an extraordinary process when we have a vacancy between elections. So, sorry, I'm only for caveat, but I did it. So Laurel Kreip, John Hamilton, Kristy Holley.
All right, Drew.
No particular order, Sean Henson, Noah Brady, and John Hamilton.
And Latricia.
Mine are in no particular order also, and again, I want to say that going through this process myself, it's always nerve-wracking, and it's not easy, but I want to thank everybody who did apply because it is a process that we use between elections. So the top three, again, no particular order, is Laurel Kreip, Kristy Holley, and John Hamilton.
All right, and mine are, I'm over here, John Hamilton, Kristy Holley, and Danny Stager. So I'm going to turn off my microphone real quick and do some math.
Also, for the record, it's Holley, H-O-L-Y, not Holley.
Thank you.
I had it summed in a spreadsheet. So from top to bottom, it's John Hamilton with five, Kristy Holley with four, Laurel Kreip with three, and then with two, Noah Brady and Danny Stager. And then with one, Jonathan Arakawa, Sean Henson, and there were a couple of zero.
So it's funny because this is exactly how the numbers went last time, five, four, three. So in theory, we just take the five, four, three, and that's who we interview based on the voting. There isn't any, there's no one person with five and a bunch of people with three or anything like that. There aren't any, there are a couple of ties, but they're all below. The ties are all below the, the next highest vote getter. So unless there is anyone who wants to push back on the system at this point, we would be interviewing John Hamilton, Kristy Holley, and Laurel Kreip based on our voting. Last time, we didn't have a motion, but I feel like maybe we should have a motion in that regard. Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, I move to interview on September second for the vacant council position, John Hamilton, Kristy Holley, and Laurel Kreip.
Second it.
Okay, and a second from Latricia. Any discussion? Really a discussion point, but. All right, we have a motion to approve the slate for interviews of John Hamilton, Kristy Holley, and Laurel Kreip. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and we will see those three folks for interviews on, at our next meeting, and so staff will reach out.
And Mayor, the second part of the question was the questions you'll see on page I ninety-seven of your packet. These are the same ten questions that were used during your last vacancy, and so the request of staff is to either confirm or edit these ten questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to go first? Well, I flipped to that page. I know there are some folks who had thoughts about questions. Amy, go ahead.
Thanks. I have some thoughts on these questions. After reviewing them, I feel like many of them are already asked in the application, and so I wanted to replace some of the questions so that we could actually get more information upon interview. And so I don't know how, how you want me to do this, but on the.
Why don't you say which questions you're proposing we eliminate, and then give us the questions you're purpo, yep, go ahead.
I was just going to ask a point of order. Do we have to eliminate in order to add, or could we just propose additions and then consider eliminations if needed?
We could do it that way. I will suggest that we will need to eliminate because we won't have enough time for too many questions. And just as a reminder for those of us who've done this before, the last time we did interviews, we did it in a work, on a work session day and had two hours, and we won't, we don't have a work session plugged in right now to do that. It's, it would likely be like a one hour, potentially one hour before the meeting, and then continue into the meeting. So just for, for thoughts about how many questions. But why don't you start with the questions you're proposing, and we'll go from there.
The questions that I'm proposing.
New questions that you're proposing.
My new questions, and some of them are to specifically replace questions I think are duplicative. So I have five suggestions. I would like to add question, how do you plan to balance the time commitment? Another question, what do you see as the top three issues facing our city? And what specific steps would you take to address them? Another is, what is your approach to handling budgets? What are spending priorities and areas that can be more efficient? What policies would you support to attract new businesses and retain existing ones? How will you handle a situation where you disagree with majority of council? And just in my reading of this, I was suggesting that questions one through four on this original ten questions, one through four, and number eight be discarded.
Can you repeat? I got top three issues for the city and how you would approach, and the next question was a budget question, but I didn't get it.
What is your approach to handling budgets? What are spend, what are your spending priorities and, or areas that can be more efficient? What policies would you support to attract new businesses and retain existing ones? And how will you handle a situation where you disagree with the majority of council?
Okay, I've got that basically jotted down.
Just to point a clarification, which ones would you prefer striking?
One through four and eight.
Okay.
Are there any other proposed changes, additions, or subtractions? Navara, go ahead.
I was thinking, because I really appreciated Amy's suggestions, particularly the question around, you know, what happens if you disagree with the majority of council? And I was thinking about question nine, and I think that's a very important question that we ask, or something similar. And without having a fully-formed idea about maybe a reframe of that, my apologies. I think, to me, it's not. I guess it's, I don't know, maybe, I think I need more time to think about it and maybe come back to me. I apologize. But Amy, I really do appreciate the suggestions you made, and for the rest of council, I don't have a problem with striking the current one through four and eight as they, as they exist currently.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to make suggestions or have questions? Okay, well, Navara, you don't get a whole lot of time because nobody else needs to, has anything in particular.
So Mayor, just so we're following you up here, what we have before us is a suggestion to strike questions one through four and strike question eight.
Correct.
And possibly insert five questions as summarized by council member Miller. That's what we're tracking.
Yes, and I will reread them for the motion, the minutes, and then we'll make sure that Carrie, you get a written copy of them so that we don't have any, so those are all the same or accurate. Was that enough time, Navara?
You know, I'm going to just be happy with, with it is proposed, including the new, the new suggestions.
Okay, very good. Amy, would you be willing to share your written questions with me so I can reread them for the motion?
Of course.
Do we have a motion? Sorry.
I will, I move to adopt the candidate questions with the changes suggested by council member Miller.
Okay.
Second.
All right, does anyone need me to reread the questions or want me to? Okay, we'll just make sure that, that, because the motion covers the proposed changes, which were read, and I have them in writing here, and we'll make sure Carrie gets those. All right, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion to approve the questions with the proposed changes, adding the five questions from council member Miller and striking questions one through four and question eight from the packet. Any, let's see, anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition. All right, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So I'm going to put that with the sign-in sheet so it gets back to Carrie. Okay, then Latricia, if you're able to hold on just another minute, I'd like to go to item G one, and that is the budget amendment. And that would be Serena, and then we'll take a quick break and excuse Latricia. Go ahead, Serena.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. So this item that's before you tonight is the second reading and adoption of the Second Amendment to the twenty twenty-five budget. Within this amendment, we primarily have included changes that are capital in nature. So these are items that were approved through the capital facilities plan process to align the twenty twenty-five budget with changes that occurred at that time. So several months of review and consideration, just aligning the budget, as well as items that have been approved by the city council for the first half of the year. So we're essentially just aligning the budget with action that's already occurred for this first half. In addition, within this amendment, we have also included a change to make a permanent position for a community development technician. So you'll recall that that was a temporary position that was authorized in the twenty twenty-five budget due to increase higher-than-expected permit revenue. We are recommending that we make that position permanent. Building permit revenue also has very specific uses that must go back toward the creation of those permits, including inspections and any other items related to that, and so it is an appropriate use of that funding. And also within that, since the first reading, we have done some analysis and determined that to promote better customer service and efficiencies, that there is a natural progression to the community development technician position for a technician two and three, and so we have included that for your consideration on the AFSME salary schedule that's been attached to the packet. So tonight, council, we are recommending that you conduct the second reading of the twenty twenty-five budget amendment number two ordinance, that you adopt the ordinance, and that you adopt the updated AFSME salary schedule that includes the addition of the community development technician two and three progression. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
I have a really quick procedural question. Does the, is the, hold on. Never mind. Okay, Lindsay, go ahead.
I might have misunderstood a comment earlier in public comment, but with the A Street Basin Sewer Project, did we include sidewalk curb cuts in a sewer project? And how do I find that?
And how do I find that?
It's a good question. That sewer project is gonna tear up a big section of that road, so it would not surprise me that we are replacing curbs and sidewalks. I don't specifically recall how many intersections would be, that would be triggering ADA ramps. We have multiple projects ongoing at the same time. We also have an ADA accessible sidewalk project going on separately, so I'm not sure where the crossover is between the two. But yes, I mean, if we're tearing up a road and we're gonna damage it, when we restore it back, we would likely put it back with what the finished intent would be for the area.
So, I mean, would these be sidewalk curb cuts to, I mean, that whole street is grass. There's not sidewalks. People walk on the grass, or the road, because there's not that much traffic. So are we creating curb cuts that are then orphaned, and then what would our plan be for when we build the sidewalks that connect to those curb cuts?
I would likely have to go back, for the best answer would be I had to go back and pull the plan sheet for you and to get a definitive answer.
I'm, can we postpone this till our next meeting? I move to continue this item to our next meeting.
I think your motion dies for lack of a second. I can ask a follow-up question, which is not exactly a follow-up question, but the question I thought of while that comment was being made. You know, we've talked about, I mean, some of the ADA stuff has to happen when we're doing certain things, and that's because of our complete streets ordinance and other things that we have adopted. So from a policy perspective, that's what makes sense. And I have also seen where we've touched a corner, and we have a curb cut that goes to a Laurelhedge, and it doesn't feel like the best use of resources, and maybe that's something that outside of this process we need to address, because what I'm wondering is, could there be a in-lu program also? Could we consider something like an in-lu process for curb cuts in the same way that we consider, that we are considering implementing an in-lu process, in-lu program for sidewalks? Because I think the commenter's point is valid, and there may not be by policy, we may need to change the policy in order to not put the curb cuts in in this particular project, but I guess that's sort of a future, I just wanna say it now while I'm thinking of it.
Want to clarification? Curb cuts plus ramp is what I heard. Curb cut alone makes a lot of sense to me. You don't build the curb to then cut it down later, but are we actually building the yellow pad with the ramp that's ADA sloped, and then it ends in grass, and we're doing that 18 blocks?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that is the particular case on the A Street Basin project. I mean, you, you are correct, council has provided a direction on providing the safe sidewalks and ADA ramps. We have been working on that for several years. We've installed hundreds of them around the city. If, if there were areas that were being impacted by the A Street Basin, Basin project, we would likely do that at that same time. But the easiest thing for me to do, the project is currently in design right now. I don't have the documents in front of me. I'd have to go back to staff and kind of confirm for you what areas are appropriate within the section of the project. I'd be happy to return that to you separately as an informational item at the next meeting, regardless of any action this evening. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, that'd be great. I'm gonna go ahead and read the ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending the city's 2025 budget for the second time. Are there question, additional questions or a motion? Navara, is your hand newly up?
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm happy to adopt the ordinance as read, and adopt the updated AFME salary schedule that includes the addition of a community development technician two and three progression.
Do you wanna say that as a motion? You kind of did, but you just said you're happy to, which is good to know, but I think it needs to be a motion. Sorry.
Can you consider it as a motion?
Does someone wanna say so moved?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we got, we have a second. All right, is there any further discussion, comments, or questions? Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear any reason why we can't wait two weeks to pass this budget amendment. We are basically, you know, ignoring public comment, when I don't think any of us think that the commenter doesn't have a good point. We don't have the information from staff to verify or deny, but it seems like it's likely the comment is in, in fact, and we should always be able to revisit decisions to make sure that we're making the best decision as we get more information. Our Capitol Facilities Plan is like over 300 pages. We're always finding new things in there, and our budget is flexible to make amendments. So the council should wait and should take the public's consideration into advice, and we shouldn't be throwing money at things that don't make sense. I don't think it's appropriate for us to say, well, we adopted a complete streets ordinance, therefore we have to spend money stupidly. That complete streets ordinance was the ethos of complete streets, which is that all street users are safe using a street. It doesn't mean that we put curb cuts to nowhere on every street. It means that people are safe walking down every street. So A Street is a great example where there are many other options to make A Street safer for pedestrians than trying to add sidewalks on a street that has no sidewalks. So I don't think saying, oh, complete streets, therefore we have to do curb cuts to nowhere, is an excuse, and I think we should wait for the information. I made a motion to do that. It was not seconded, that is why I'm gonna vote no.
Thank you. I'm going to support the mo, oh, anyone else, sorry? Okay, I'm gonna support the motion. I heard the public comment, and I think there is an opportunity to pass this, and I think it can be a both and, so I'm gonna take that approach. And I also just wanna say, I appreciate the two things, the position for the community development technician being, becoming full-time. I think that makes it a much more, it's certainly good from a customer service perspective, and it makes it easier for someone to say yes to a job, because they're not trying to cobble things together and can have a full-time job. And I also really appreciate the opportunity for growth built in by allowing some steps in that, and being able to be promoted to a technician, from a technician two to three, et cetera. So I appreciate how that was thought out and is presented to us. Any further comments? Okay, so we have a motion to conduct the second reading of the 2025 Budget Amendment Number Two ordnance, oh, sorry. We have a motion to adopt the ordinance and adopt the updated AFME salary schedule that includes the addition of the community development technician two and three progression. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
I wanted to put my aye in.
Okay, thank you, Latricia, sorry. All right, so the motion passes five to one. Thank you all. And Latricia, I understand you would like us to excuse you from the rest of the meeting to have a motion to do so.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of excusing Councilmember Suggs from the rest of the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
And, yeah. All right, and Navara is raising her hand as well, so thank you very much, Latricia, for joining us for this part, and we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
All right, good night.
Good night. All right, we will take a five-minute break and come back and pick up with the consent agenda. Thank you. Okay, thank you all. We will go back to the, sort of the beginning. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, is there anything anyone would like to add to the consent agenda? Just ask, because, oh, Amy, go ahead.
I have a few. You want me to go one at a time?
Sure.
I would like to add H1, the resolution ratifying a declaration of emergency.
I got a thumbs up from Navara. Any opposition? No opposition, okay?
And I, two and three.
No oppositions to that? Okay.
And J, two and four.
All right. Any, oh, no oppositions to those either. Okay, I don't oppose either, so I will go ahead and read the consent agenda. Catch me if I mess anything up. The City Council Minutes of July 15th and July 22nd, 2025, expenditure report from July 5th, 2025 to August 9th, 2025, in the amount of $6,080,0363.97. City of Port Angeles, Decamp Facility, CON-2024-06, SW0112, final acceptance. Material purchase, electric, electrical underground cables, 2025 purchase. Thar Department Labor and Industries grant and equipment purchase. Public safety generator maintenance contract, 2025-30. Equipment repair wastewater treatment plant, trickling filter pump, number two. A resolution ratifying a declaration of emergency petrocard Indian Creek spill, 2025. Water shortage declaration pre-authorization. Madrona Law Group agreement. Harbor cleanup process remedial design consultant contract. CON-2022-49, electrical dock crew contract extension. Comments, questions, or a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
As read?
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Anyone opposed to the motion to approve the consent agenda as read, please state your opposition? All right, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And I just wanna note, for what it's worth, if anyone pays very close attention, Latricia usually accuses herself from the harbor cleanup, any Western Harbor issues, but she is not here, so that is why we had it in the regular consent agenda tonight. All right, that brings us to item G2, and I'm gonna go back to Serena for that one.
Good evening. So this next item seeks to further clarify action that was taken by City Council at the December 17th City Council meeting relative to the utility base rate ordinance. And so the ordinance for consideration is focused on phase one only, which includes voluntary disconnections. And so these are properties that have a meter already installed, but are requesting a temporary disconnection of services, so for example, people who snowboard, or like a vacant building or home. And it does apply to residential and commercial accounts. With the intent of these changes is to provide further clarification to the ordinance and a more narrow focus on the changes that occurred in December, just to kind of help with an understanding of why this occurred and what it includes. And so as a reminder, the city is... And so as a reminder, the city is required to reserve water and electric for properties that are connected to our system at across the city that we do build into our base rate. And so that's why it's recommended that these base rates are charged at this time, and it further promotes fairness for all users of the utility. It's also important to note that these changes are related to the voluntary disconnections only. And so staff is still defining phase two, which applies to the vacant properties that do not have a utility meter. And so as a result, further action would be required by council to move that phase two forward at a future time. And so staff is recommending that City Council conduct the first reading of the ordinance for the utility base rate voluntary shut-off service update, and that you continue this item to the September 2nd meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and read the ordinance, and then I can open it up for questions. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington regarding maintenance of utility infrastructure, amending chapter 13.16, utility accounts of the Port Angeles Municipal Code. Are there any comments or questions from council? Go ahead, Lindsay.
Yeah, I'd like to say just a little bit more about why we're doing this. You know, the city's, this is how safety and welfare of all its residents. A big part of how the city operates is deciding who pays for things. And I think historically, the city has had a lot of policies that allow folks often, often property owners to shift costs onto other people and not pay for their fair share of the resources. So in our utility rate structure, we have an idea that the base rate is the cost of bringing the service to the parcel. And then the variable, the consumption rate is the variable cost of how much electricity or how much water the utility customer uses. So if the city is incurring that cost to bring the utility to the parcel, regardless of whether or not somebody's using it, we're still incurring that base rate cost. And that's why we should continue to charge that base rate cost to the parcel owner, the utility customer. Allowing them to turn it off basically says they can continue to get the benefit of a utility-connected parcel without paying their fair share of the cost to all of the utility users in the city of that. They become freeloaders, basically. And so I'm really proud of us as a city for addressing this issue. I mean, we've been addressing multiple utility issues, I think, you know, for more dexter than I, like, starting with the subsidy for large parking lots. And then, you know, we've been digging into utility rates for a while. So this is a step in the right direction to address what I see as a freeloader issue. And, you know, the step of people who are utility-connected parcels, that part is easy. And so, you know, we're doing that part now, or we've already done that. And the second part is what about parcels that are potential utility customers? They're inside the city, but they're not yet utility customers. I think that's a lot more challenging because there's some nuance there. One piece of it is not every parcel in the city is something that should be developed. There's parcels along creek ravines and other environmental sensitive areas that we don't want that development there. And we need to figure out as a city what the future of those parcels actually looks like. And then a third piece of it, which is not in the ordinance today, but I think is worth thinking about, is how do we use utility rates to incentivize the kind of of city landscape that is going to be beneficial to our long-term economy? So a city where people are able to walk to services, walk to stores, have that density of economic activity that supports the physical environment, that supports paying for the street, paying for the parks, paying for services like police and fire, paying for the utilities. That's going to require a lot more housing and buildings in the city. And we should have utility rates that incentivize people adding those infill developments to the parcels that already have utility connections. So I have a neighbor. They have a house standard lot over Cherry Hill. And they would love to have an accessory dwelling in the backyard so that one of their adult children with disabilities can live nearby but not in the house. But they would be paying an entirely separate base rate to add that ADU to their backyard. And we require that of them. How do we separate that out and basically say, well, we're already bringing services to that parcel? You know, if we go back to the theory of what the base rate pays for, it pays for getting the service to the parcel. So how does the, why does the base rate change when there's a second housing unit on that same parcel? That doesn't make sense to me. That's something we need to continue to address. We've made some starts and stops. We've done it with some utilities. But we still need to continue to push that forward, and I hope that that's something that we can continue as the council. That, I will clarify, is separate from the ordinance before us, but it's part of the same thing of using the actually putting our philosophy on our utility rates into practice and having that incentivize an economically vibrant city. Thanks.
Drew?
Yeah, so I support the part one for voluntary turnoff as well. With slightly different reasoning. So I actually fall into this category. I have a rental property. I rent out an ADU. It is currently vacant. I just went to our utility counter today to pay money to transition it back into my name specifically. And so my options are to pay the base rate and consumption, or well, if this passes and goes into effect, I still pay the base rate. So either way, I'll still end up paying the base rate until I have a new tenant in place who will also pay a fee to then transfer it into his name. And I recognize that because the service that's being provided, as we've mentioned, the base rate is you have access to power on your property. And then the consumption rate is how much you use. And I don't think this is an issue of freeloaded or an issue of property owners trying to pass the buck. I think actually this is an issue from decades ago of the city not really looking at what the base rate should be paying for and what the base rate goes towards. So if you think of it entirely instead of trash collection. So we have trash collecting services in Port Angeles. You can pay to have your trash picked up twice a month or every week. Well, I'm going to leave for six months, so I'm just going to go ahead and stop trash collecting. Cool, we'll stop charging you because the trash truck just won't come to your house. No problem. Well, if you leave for six months and turn off your electric, the wires are still there. It's still going from the poles to the box. The power meter is still there. All the equipment is still there. It would be no different than if you still set your trash can out without any trash in it. We're still going to charge you if you have trash surfaces. So in this case, I would argue that the base rate probably should have always been to anyone that has a power meter. Regardless. And that is a feeling I feel on the city side of not recognizing that. And frankly, the idea of, well, instead of that, let's just build it into our consumption rates instead, would be more difficult and frankly, more costly for more people to do that instead of just paying the base rate for everybody. I do think the conversations for vacant lots and is a entirely different conversation that we'll get into another time. But for those reasons, I do plan on supporting ordinance that we have in front of us tonight.
Thank you, Drew. Anyone else?
All right. I will just quickly jump in and say I support the ordinance that we're looking at for reasons that I think are basically the same or similar. I might not use the same language, but similar to other folks. If we let people opt out, then we, then in order to cover all of those expenses, other people are functionally paying more. And that's not equitable. And I appreciate this phase one is, unless I'm wrong, and I can be corrected before the next meeting, so I will follow up, but is properties with improvements. And I think we did hear a concern about vacant properties. And frankly, I think we've heard a lot, especially as we were talking about short-term rentals. Well, gosh, you're talking about short-term rentals from a housing perspective, but you have all these vacant properties in town. Why aren't we doing anything about those? And I think in the meantime, while we're maybe going to get back to that at some point, I think one of the reasons that we have vacant properties where we have, I have one near me. The grandson inherited from the grandfather, so it has sentimental value, but it's been empty since 2019. You've all heard me talk about it before. If you've followed along. And we could have some positive incentives to develop it. He has people, a list of people he has told me, the owner, interested in buying it. So sell it already, which he may be doing. But in the meantime, it also isn't costing him enough to let it sit empty. And so this is one way that we can incentivize people from keeping their properties from being empty, is it's going to cost you anyway. And I understand if you're going to be gone for a few months, you're not going to probably rent it out or whatever, and I still think you should have to pay in. But, but when we, because someone called out specifically vacant properties, as in they're empty and haven't been lived in for quite some time, probably not even habitable at this point. I think it's appropriate to be charging them the base rate. And maybe will be an additional little piece to get them to say, gosh, now it's costing me more to let it sit empty than it is to, that I might lose by selling it or what have you. So anyway, I am in support of this and appreciate the the clarifications that are being made.
Last call for comments or questions.
Okay, so do we have a motion yet? Oh, my gosh, I don't know why I'm having trouble. It is a first reading. Never mind. Sorry. First reading. We'll continue this. Thank you. It's right here in front of me. First reading. So I will, we will be back about this at the September 2nd meeting. Thank you. And that brings us to item J1, and that is an exciting thing. So I'm glad we didn't put on consent because I really am excited to hear about it. And I'm going to go to Scott for item J1.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm on page J1 of our packet. So before us tonight is amendment one to the interlocal agreement between the City of Port Angeles and the Lower Elwaklalem Tribe for the 2024-26 Ennis Creek Fish Barrier Removal Professional Services Agreement. So this is a joint project that we were in coordination with, with the tribe. The tribe originally started this work. And in coordination with them, they are asking that it's now time for us to step in and continue on with the project, which is what this legislation tonight is doing. On page J46 of the packet, there's a, there's a picture of an example of some of the culverts, just so you're aware. And I know I've met several of you council members actually down at the site. So this is, these are the same areas that we've been talking about over the past year. So with that said, the city and Lower Elwaklalem Tribe have been working toward the correction of fish barrier culverts located at the intersection of Ennis Creek and East Ennis Creek Road through an interlocal agreement initiated in 2024, which defines responsibilities for each party to ensure a successful design project. The Engineering Division this evening seeks City Council approval to, one, amend the ILA to shift project management responsibilities from the tribe to the city for the remainder of the design work, and two, to execute a professional services agreement with the existing consultant Environmental Science Associates. Funding for the project originally started with the tribe. The tribe has consumed the grant resources that they had. Here recently, through the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, we received a $300,000 Brian Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board Grant in support of the project for removal of two culverts along Ennis Creek. There's a $45,000, 15% city match that was pulled from the general fund to accomplish the work. So tonight, the recommendation from the administration is, one, approve and authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one to the interlocal agreement between the City of Port Angeles and the Lower Elwaklalem Tribe for 2024 to 2026, and two, to award a professional services agreement with Environmental Science Associates in the not-to-exceed amount of $150,909. And three, execute all contract-related documents to administer the contract and to make minor modifications as necessary.
Thank you, Scott. Lindsay, you have your hand up. So go ahead.
Since Director Curtin just read the motion, I will say so moved.
Second.
Excellent. Any comments or questions about the motion? Lindsay, you don't want to speak to your motion? Go ahead.
Yeah, we are really fortunate to be able to work in partnership with Lower Elwaklalem Tribe and their Natural Resources Department and their whole staff and the council on this project and many others related to protecting the ecosystems in and around Port Angeles. So thank you for continuing to work on this, and I hope that we could do much more.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Okay.
I will just say that I'm really excited about this. When I went and did the Ennis Creek tour with the Mantoos, it was clear that I think we knew at that, at the time I did the tour, that the state was likely going to be working on their fish passage barrier and were the sort of remaining hindrance from, well, accepting Rainier's property and the contamination there. This is a really important step, and it's really exciting to have a creek inside the city limits that could potentially be fully restored. And so making some progress on this in partnership with the tribe, who has also partnered with the Mantoos on some projects on the creek. It's really good to be working on this project, and I'm excited that we're at our part now and that those barriers may, in the not-too-distant future, be removed. And we might be able to see a pretty amazing recovered creek inside the city limits. So I'm excited to support, support this motion.
Anyone else? Okay. So we have a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one to the interlocal agreement between the City of Port Angeles and the Lower Elwaklalem Tribe for 2024 to 2026, and award a professional services agreement with Environmental Science Associates in the not-to-exceed amount of $150,909, and execute all contract-related documents to administer the contract and to make minor modifications as necessary. Anyone opposed to the motion? Please state your opposition. All right. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Exciting. And probably less disruptive to traffic for than, than the state's project. Okay, that brings us to J3, which is a follow-up and moving forward on the North Olympic Peninsula Re-Compete project, and I'm going to go to Calvin for that.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll find this information starting on page J71 of your packet. The distressed area re-compete pilot program was created to invest in distressed communities, to create and connect people in those communities to good-paying jobs. In 2023, Clalum and Jefferson Counties created the partnership called the North Olympic Peninsula Re-Compete Coalition to apply for the pilot program, and were subsequently awarded $35.6 million to invest in distressed communities in the North Olympic Peninsula. This MOU process proposes a shared intention to continue and expand the private-public partnership to manage the program through the lifetime of the grant. City Council appointed Councilmember Schwab to serve as the city's representative. At that time of the appointment, an alternate was not required. Per the new MOU, the city should identify an alternate. Tonight's recommendation is to, one, authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding, and two, appoint an alternate to serve on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm just going to say quickly that we should appoint someone tonight, and then we can always reconsider when we appoint someone, and also I think maybe this becomes part of our regular assignments in January. So just from process perspective, thought it was worth saying that out loud. So I will start by just asking, is there anyone who would like, oh, Navar, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there is a reason why this has to be approved tonight instead of at the next meeting. Theoretically, we are just about to appoint a seventh member who doesn't have any council assignments. And it is likely we have other council assignments that were assigned to Councilmember Meyer at the time. Those are hanging out there. So I'm wondering why we aren't doing this all at the same time.
And I'm going to go to Councilmember Schwab, who may have an answer for us, and then I have a suggestion. If not, yeah, go ahead.
Well, as far as why it has to be tonight, it's mostly so we get it done. And I'll totally toss Commissioner French under the bus if he wants to explain any more about that. But as far as requirements go, twofold. One, I'll point out in the year and a half, almost two years I've served, I've yet to meet a meeting. So the alternate probably won't actually have to worry about ever attending anything ever. The flip side to that equation, though, is this is not an easy committee, and this would be a horrible one to toss someone that we appoint to on. That would be cruel and mean. And unless they have a very firm understanding of a lot of regional economics as well as our areas, I would highly recommend we choose someone who's sitting on councils currently to be an alternate. who's sitting on councils currently to be an alternate, as opposed to throw someone to the wolves in that regard. So that's my two cents as far as who should, not necessarily who we should appoint, but whether or not we should wait for later.
Okay, so I've invited Commissioner French to come down and speak to that. But I also just want to say quickly, the, to Navara's point, if we wait until we appoint someone, we wouldn't necessarily appoint the new person, but we may reorganize just a little bit because Brendan's positions are currently not filled. And so someone may say, well, I've been doing X, but I'd really like to do recompete. And then we put the new person on X, and there may be just a little bit of a shuffle, not a big shuffle, because we're going to do a big shuffle in January probably. But but I think, so Commissioner French, if you want to speak to the timeline in particular, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Hello, council and staff. Commissioner Mike French, I've been the chair of this recompete coalition since its organization. So to answer the question, I don't think there's any need to act tonight. Clalum County has had a very large sense of urgency to prepare this document, which is we've, we felt like we were behind on our timeline. But now that it's prepared, you're actually one of the first organizations that has really considered it. And so I don't see personally a rush to decide anything if you want time and have another council member to have input. And I'm happy to ask, answer any other questions. This, we've tried to try to kind of strike a balance with this, you know, to to show who is doing all the work, to be transparent, to, and then the, the thing that I think is really relevant to the city of Port Angeles, because you're not one of the organizations that is actually deploying any of the funding. You're not directly contracting with EDA, which is how this grant has been set up. The coalition member section, section 2.3 is probably the section that's most relevant, as well as the committee section in the leadership committee, where that is where your appointee will be serving on the leadership committee. And so those are the sections that I think are the most relevant to you all. And I would just, you know, the one thing that I would want to add as the chair is the, the part that I would like to emphasize under the section 2.3 coalition members is we really encourage all the organizations that are a part of this effort to incorporate any of the recompete strategies and initiatives and documents that we've, that have created this organization, and have those be relevant to your strategic planning and your comprehensive planning documents. Because we're really trying to say, this is an economic vision that we as a region have, and we want as many people onboard of that vision as possible. And so that's, that's the section I think would be most relevant. But I don't think there's any rush to necessarily approve this tonight if you don't, if you want to have another meeting to talk about it.
All right. Questions for Commissioner French or a motion either moving forward or if someone, one, it sounds like there may be a consensus, if that's the right word, to postpone. But go ahead, Lindsay.
I was going to try and move what we can forward and do what we can do later. So I move to authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding and appoint an alternate to serve once we have seven council members serving.
Second. All right, everyone went to second at the same time. That seems like a good motion to, to move us forward and set a timeline so the county knows that that is our intention and that we can sign the document and then send over a name later. Any further comments or questions? Okay, so we have a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding and appoint an alternate to serve on the committee once we have seven seated council members. Anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and thanks for being here, so you can give us that background and that information.
Thank you, and we appreciate every organization that has been a part of this recompete coalition, and we appreciate all you all, so.
Thank you, thanks for your hard work on it. All right, that brings us to council reports. And we, it's been a while because we haven't had a meeting in a little bit. I'll start with Councilmember Miller.
Okay. It has been a while, so I have a thing. So most recently, I'm going to start most recently and go backwards. I attended a webinar on the House Bill 2015 the other day, and I'm aware that I did miss a council discussion on that on July 15, and hope that there will still be another chance for me to share on that topic. I was honored to attend the canoe journeys, which was amazing. We had a homelessness task force meeting that was bigger than usual. We had city representatives from Port Angeles, Forks, Scrim, and the county to talk about the permitting process for tiny shelter communities. And we had also representatives from 4PA and Taffey as organizations that are permitting tiny shelter communities. And so the idea was to talk about where the, where the barriers were and how and if things can be made easier for organizations. That went well, I'm sure there's still more discussion to be had on that. Also, I was honored to be able to spend some time with our outreach folks. I met with Officer Balderson, Officer Miller, no relation, and also Kim from Rediscovery, who was the coresponder. And I also connected with the community paramedics, all in one walk. And so we had a whole crowd. We were walking. At my request, these folks got together for, for me, which made me feel special and also wanted to get a firsthand look at what is, what is happening at our, in our Tunwater area where the fire was recently, and wanted to see sort of how things were being managed. And so it was really interesting. I think what I would like to just share on that is I would invite you all to do the same. I would invite you all to, again, put yourself in the room, but rather this time, put yourself on the trail and wear waterproof boots, but to see what is going on and how our partners are interacting and some of the barriers that they are coming up against and how we might be able to help that. I also got to spend a couple of hours with Deputy Chief Vluga on a ride along. Got to help look for a missing person, and I didn't find her. I really wanted to. So again, just throwing out there that I would really suggest you guys do some of the same. I attended the AWC Legislative Priorities Meeting just this week. I guess it feels like for, like two days ago. And I don't have a report on UAC because it has been canceled. I think that covers it. Thanks.
Thank you. Navara, go ahead.
No report.
Thank you, Navara. Lindsay.
So I think as a city, we try to do things that follow best available science or the best policies, best practices. And the other day, I was walking by the Francis Street Park, the 911 Memorial Park, and there was a sign that I think is new, maybe I'm mistaken. It was very shiny, and it said, no camping. And there wasn't a sign that said no fireworks, there wasn't a sign that said no dogs on leash, there wasn't a sign that said all sorts of other, no, you can't do this thing. It was just no camping. There's also a relatively new gate there. There's also been some vegetation removal. I've seen new gates in other places and city parks. And so it's like, well, okay, what are you accomplishing here? And so earlier this year, some researchers looked at this question. Do criminalization policies impact local homelessness? This is published on Social Science Research Network, ssrn.com. Do criminalization policies impact local homelessness? The abstract says, "Local criminalization policies draw on the logic of deterrence to levy costs on individuals who engage in behaviors that are closely associated with various public concerns, such as those criminalizing behaviors associated with homelessness, thereby potentially reducing community level costs. Yet it is unclear whether the presence of these policies can be relied upon to reduce the frequency of a social crisis within a local municipality." That's the research question. To answer this question, this article utilizes a difference indifference design to determine whether passing an ordinance criminalizing behaviors closely related to homelessness produces a subsequent decrease in homelessness within a community, thereby generating the expected community level cost savings. Contrary to the deterrence logic, the results indicate that these local criminalization ordinances cannot be relied upon to reduce the social crisis rate. In other words, the number of people experiencing homelessness, and therefore do not provide the intended community level benefits. In other words, don't try and criminalize homelessness. It doesn't do anything, it's ineffective, it doesn't solve the problem. And if we have resources to enforce that, then we need to spend those resources in a better way actually solving the problem. So, you know, if, if we're overstaffing departments that have time to do ineffective work that doesn't solve problems, we know there are plenty of problems in the city. Let's spend our resources to do that. So there's various responses to the, the wave of, the wave of criminalization efforts by cities. And just to be clear, in Portland, just we have not changed policies in recent years. So we're not one of these cities that have criminalized recently, although many laws criminalizing activities that are legal on your own property but illegal in public exist in Port Angeles's municipal code. So I'll read a little bit from an article in, on the website, nextcity.org, and it's a new study proves criminalizing homelessness is ineffective. So this is just an abstract or part of that article. According to National Homelessness Law Center in the year since Grant Pass, and Grant Pass is the decision by the US Supreme Court that says that cities can fine and effectively criminalize homelessness. It was a Med Circuit decision that said they couldn't, based on Martin versus Boise out of Idaho. 260 laws criminalizing homelessness have been passed in cities around the country, most of them camping bans. And 57 state-level laws criminalizing homelessness were introduced in 17 states, although only four were passed. To stem the tide of criminalization, the National Homelessness Law Center created model legislation called the Gloria Johnson Act, named for the unhoused plaintiff in the Grants Pass case, which would make it illegal to cite or arrest someone for sleeping outside when there's nowhere else to go. It will also change zoning laws to allow more RV parking. The bill has been introduced in 11 states, but has not been passed as of yet. A national version of the bill was introduced in Congress by Representatives Promela Giappal and Maxwell Frost. On June 26, elected officials and cosponsors gathered at a press conference in Washington DC to introduce the bill. "Homelessness is not a personal failure, it is a policy failure," Rep. Giappal said at the press conference. In a press release ahead of the bill's introduction, Southern Poverty Law Center CEO Margaret Huang said, quote, "The arguments driving these anti-camping laws and legislation are rooted in the same justifications once used to legitimize vagrancy laws, which are historically intertwined with economic and racial subordination and rely on the false idea that poverty is synonymous with criminality." So here in the city, I think we're striving to treat everybody with dignity and respect. I think the policies that we're doing as a council reflect that. And so, you know, if we're seeing on the ground actions by our staff that are contrary to that, we might need to address it at the council level with who gets resources to do their work and how to direct those resources to people who are effectively doing the job of solving problems, not ineffective solutions or so-called solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
All right, I have to pull my hand down the calendar because it's been like four weeks. Let's see, end of last month, myself and I think a couple of other council members were able to go to the elected officials briefing on the PetroCard Indian Creeks bill. I also had a recompete meeting as well as a North Peninsula Tourism Commission, Olympic, sorry, that's what happens when half the acronyms around here are almost identical because everyone uses North Peninsula and Olympic in some configuration. Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission meeting as well. And actually, everyone just seems to be busy during the summertime, which means they're not setting up meetings with us. So actually, somehow I only had like three meetings between now and then. So that's all I have.
All right. I wish I'd had what felt like a vacation, but some things happened that made, that made that not so much the case. Starting with the spill, which for me started, I took that Friday off and had the scanner on and heard the call come in. And I was like, well, that's unfortunate. And it did take me a minute to be like, oh, it's not just unfortunate, it directly potentially impacts the city. So I happened to be coming down anyway to sign some stuff, mentioned it to staff. Don't know if that saved us any time in shutting water down, but that sort of consumed the next 48 hours or so. I was on the phone as late as 10:30 on Saturday night, trying to connect staff with director-level staff at Department of Health. Learned very quickly who the new point person is for our region for the governor's office and got to know him quite well over the weekend. Participated in the press conference. I did not invite counsel because it didn't feel like it was my thing to invite to. So my apologies if people felt, I don't know what the word is I'm looking for, if that was upsetting to folks. And given the state of my brain, I didn't think to ask, so my apologies for that. I will say I appreciated the very quick response from Representative Randall's office. They reached out to us on Friday evening. They were the first elected outside of the city to reach out to us. And then connected with the governor's office the next day and the governor. And then just calling out folks, I think it's important to call out folks who did step up and, and tried to be supportive. And Senator Patty Murray called me on Monday. I directed her to the tribe. And want to, as I said in the follow-up meeting on the PetroCard event, appreciate the unified command very quickly, including Matt Byrne, the natural resources representative from the tribe. I think there was initially some concern about whether people really understood the importance of the river and how critical it was that it was cleaned up in a way that was respectful and recognizing all of the restoration work that has gone into it. And Matt Byrne spoke very eloquently about that at the press conference. So grateful they included him in that. And then also just think it's worth saying again, in a public setting, thank you to our staff. Nathan came back from vacation, but Calvin was the point person for the city for quite a long time. Daryl and Scott certainly were also very active. And then on Sunday, everybody, it was all hands on deck. I happened to be here to meet up with folks for the press conference, and it was leadership team and downline staff and people coming to get their vests. And everybody came to help distribute water. We got help from the National Park Service because they noticed that we might need their help because our line at Civic Field was stretching up into the park for water distribution. So anyway, I think there were some good lessons learned. And what I will say about that is I think both ecology and Department of Health were very willing to listen and recognize that they had some things to learn. And I appreciate that they acknowledged that. We met, Nathan and I met later in the week with KC6 Killer, the director of ecology, and talked to him a little bit about how things went. And feel like, you know, having a little opportunity, although it would have been better, under better circumstances, to develop some relationship in advance of sending our public comment about Rainier was probably not a bad thing. Then later in the week, I had the opportunity to read a proclamation recognizing and honoring former mayor Sherri Kidd, who is Miss Senior World, which is, I feel like that's like the biggest. But you can't go any further than that. She's the Miss Senior World, so a senior pageant. And so we had a little reception at the senior center and got to see her in her full dress with this giant train and her crown. It was pretty impressive. Definitely she was in her element. So anyway, that was a fun opportunity and a good, something different. It was a good balance for what had happened over the weekend. I also spent, we went down to the landing for canoe journeys with the governor's representative, met up with the air station commander there as well. And then I don't know, I know other council members were there as well. And there were so many people, we all could have been there at the same time and wouldn't have seen each other. I was there most of the day on Friday, left for a little bit to grab some dinner and go down to say hello to everyone. down to say hello to everyone who was at National Night Out, and then went back. I did not stay until all of Clalum Nations had gone, but did stay until about 11:15. And so I got to see the group protocol for Clalum Nation, which was really cool. It was a good moving experience, and I think that's enough for tonight. And I'll turn it over to Deputy Director, no, is that right? Deputy City Manager, gracious. Calvin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and just a appreciation for your kind words regarding the PetroCard emergency and specifically calling out Director Curtin and Chief Sharp, who put untold hours in over that weekend. So thank you. But also to you, Mayor, for your pivotal leadership during that crisis and the connections you were able to make at high levels within the state bureaucracy was time-sensitive and very much appreciated. So thank you. Counsel, there will not be a work session on August 26 regarding the Joint Public Safety Facility. Instead, that discussion is tentatively being moved to 5:00 PM on 9/16. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us to our second public comment period. So if you are still here and wish to make a comment, if you're online, again, if you're in the WebEx, star three, and we'll do council chambers first. So go ahead when you're ready. John?
Yeah, hi, John Rawson. And I forgot to thank you and welcome you to the first meeting in August. My first comments tonight. Anyway, with regards to this ordinance dealing with utility base rates, I myself, who try to understand this, is still totally confused. Mr. Drake that was here earlier testifying about his water meter, I happen to know where Mr. Drake's property is, and it's a vacant piece of land, that I'm not sure there's ever been a building on it, and chances are that something might have been stubbed out there, and there might be a concrete box there. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's a meter there. At the same time, the mayor and other people in the council were regularly talking about vacant properties and referring to a building that's on the corner of Ninth and Washington, by the way, I've tried to purchase several times, and it's also a vacant property. So when you read this ordinance and you talk about property vacant, what's vacant? What's not vacant? What's a meter? When there is not a meter? What's a box? What's a meter on the side of a building where the, or a building of, where an electrical box would be on the side of the building where the meter's been pulled? So what you've got here, and I think you guys know I come to a lot of these meetings, including the Utility Commission meeting when this sort of stuff got going two years ago, that I'm not sure the people on the commission that had two council people and three other people were really aware of what they were sort of voting for. I think there's a lot of influence by council people on that commission. I don't think this thing's clear at all. If it's not clear to me, I'm not sure it's clear to the public, so I guess seller or buyer beware. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else in council chambers? All right, and we have one online. Suzie, I'm gonna restart your timer, and we'll make sure we can hear you first.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you, so go ahead. I'll start your timer.
Thank you. Suzie Blake, Port Angeles resident, trying to make some quick comments. One, I really hope you guys will listen to Mr. Palio and all his comments about the economy and the local situation that he's made over the past year. I don't just log on to these meetings while I'm still trying to finish up my workday to hear myself talk. I've been listening to others, too, and I really hope you'll give his data he's provided and crunched for you guys some strong consideration. Two, I'm glad to hear the topic of freeloaders come up, although the grandma leaving her house for a few months so she can go south and warm her arthritic bones in the winter is not who I would have started with. The camping in the parks, you know, this gets batted around periodically. If you choose not to decide, you still have made a choice. If, if you want to allow camping in the parks, then have rules and monitor it and permit it and run background checks. And I would encourage you to check the sex offender registry by city for Port Angeles and find that the number of transient sex offenders we have as a percentage of the overall NPA creeps up, and it's been averaging about ten, and about half of those are convicted of crimes against children, and they're often not reported until they get in trouble for other things, they're not updating their registries. I can go into detail about that later, but I've had to get the county to follow up on transient sex offenders convicted of crimes against children who are camping in the park. Blighted and nuisance properties, Mr. Rawson raises a good question. Would, would the blighted property at Motor and Laurel, that's been a caved-in burnout house for seven years, be vacant? I sure hope they're paying their share. And just one correction regarding Mr. Slater. It was stated that there were three elections running opposed, and Mr. Slater may be, still be on the ballot, but he actually announced on his social media on July 23 that he was withdrawing his candidacy. So while he is on the ballot, it's misleading to tell the public that he's in the election. He's really not. And again, I just find it interesting that so soon after the deadline for filing, someone resigns, and all of a sudden, we've got applicants crawling out of the woodwork. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you, Suzie. Good night.
I, I'd like to just clarify, I was not aware of Tyler Slater, who is a candidate for position two, which is the seat that Councilmember Schwab currently fills, who's also a candidate. I was not aware of his social media statement, so I, I neither, I don't know that, I was not attempting to mislead anyone.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Go ahead, come on down. Just state your name and whether or not you're a resident.
My name is Jesse Banks. I'm a local resident, born and raised here. So I come here today, I want to know who runs law and order in this town. I was assaulted about a month ago on Second Street at Jesse Webster's Park. This guy was a registered sex offender, and he's constantly driving around town in his gold Murano, just trashing up the place, constantly using it as a shooting gallery, shooting it up. It was at Swains for probably a good three months. I called the 4545, I got no response ever. When I was assaulted, I was hit with a D-ring tow shackle in the back of my head. So if that would have missed by about an inch, it would have killed me. I was on 4545 at the time. No response from police officers. They called me at my house, I called them back, they did not respond, they did not check my well-being. They drove by my house twice. They know where I live, they know who I am. I'm a person that I'm trying to do right. I built the Calisthenic Park in town. I've been, I've been partying back in my day, did drugs, alcohol, but I'm clean for fifteen years. I cannot stand what is going on right now at Jesse Webster's Park, the Veterans Center next to the jail that you guys should, I mean, are any of you guys veterans? Because we have my PA today that's cleaning up next to them, screwing these guys off that are shooting up right in front of children. So Jesse Webster's Park, kids are scared of going there because of what that lady just said, there are so many registered sex offenders in this town that it is above and beyond. Washington protects them. And this new drug law of 3.5, it's just great for drug addicts that don't want to get clean. I, I am all for those mini houses that are being built for clean people, but it is very obvious what is going on with the junkies that are taken advantage of. And the solution is this. San Diego has 1.4 million people in there. One year I go there, junkies everywhere, just like Jesse Webster's Park and next to the Veterans Center. Next year I go there, they're gone. I talk to all the homeless, I'm like, what's going on? Why are they gone? They built a sanctuary fenced in area for the, the guys, the people that, and they still want to get high and take advantage of this fake law. They're in there, and if they get out of that area, they get a strike. They continue to get out of there, and the strike three, they're arrested. Because why? They don't want to get clean. So what needs to be done in this community is we need to step up for the kids, the elderly, and the veterans. You guys are trashing them. Why is that allowed next to the jail and courthouse? Every day, junkies shooting up. Officer Vieda, is public drug use allowed? Is that legal? Openly shooting up and smoking crystal meth, is that illegal? Oh, you can't answer that. Okay, so I'm just saying, each and every one of you guys should, okay, you, Katie Dexter, you work at the Peninsula College. You know that black RV that's been going on with no license plate, no tabs, trashing every time he goes to a place? It's trash. And guess what? My PA gets to come clean it up. Yay, get a ribbon. No, we should take advantage of these criminals. These are drug addict criminals, the ones that want to get clean? Yes, let them get clean, but you guys need to step up and do your job. This is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, then thank you all for being here, and we are adjourned, and we'll see you on the second of September.